Back to order, the lighting light is on. And welcome, Joe. What's going on? Your board is all yours. Green.
Thank you very much, Board. Through the chair, it was 2018 was the last time I was in Pemberton. I actually slept, this is rather embarrassingly, I actually slept on the top of tender 10 outside for the Gouss Creek fires. So I have been here before, but not in this room. So it's nice to come here. So thank you very much for the opportunity to come here today to present. A couple of reasons that I wanted to come here today. First and foremost, the Scottish accent doesn't necessarily go well with teams. But I also really, and I'm just being honest, it doesn't work. I've tried it several times, it just doesn't, doesn't go well for me. But I also wanted to come here today to kind of answer any questions, but also just to show how this has affected our community. The question itself is a basic, simple request. We're looking for a letter of support for the District of Lillawett and the ER closures that we're basically seeing in our area. But I want to be clear when I say that the letter of support is for the District of Lillawett. The letter of support is for the District of Lillawett and Interior Health. We are working alongside Interior Health. We want to continue to work alongside Interior Health. It does not need to be a joint letter with the District of Lillawett. It can be independent, just completely separate for the SLRD. However you guys want to frame it, I just would like the opportunity to work with CEO and Paul and make sure that we're all on the same page with it. What we've been seeing in our area has been, has been affecting our community substantially over from June to now. We've had over 20 closures ranging from 24 hours to 48 hours. It affects our insurance, it affects PC hydro's working programs, it affects hunting, it affects logging, it affects our major industries as well as tourism. We have had closures throughout the Chukotin landslide. We have closures throughout heat domes and the hottest day of the year so far where our community is at the highest risk. This is not just that independent one-off closure. These are ongoing closures and unfortunately there's no real end in sight for it. So we wanted to bring this forward to the SLRD. We already tell everybody to support all six of our chiefs and our local First Nations groups and then around us that completely support that. We had it from Jackie Taggart and we also had it from Dan Vis. We also now have a letter to the principal from our incoming MLA, Tony Luck as well. I was just chatting about that today. It's not just our immediate community that this affects, it also affects RCMP and how the police, it affects our fire departments, it affects our wildfire departments, and it also affects our relationship and how we work with ESS and our regional district boards as well. So when we're looking at larger scale emergencies and how we came up with our emergency plans, how we look at what we're doing for evacuation orders and evacuation notifications, it seriously affects on how we manage it. The problems seem simple, but they're not, and they're not isolated to Lillawett. It is not just Lillawett that is affected by this. It's not only the whole of BC, but it's the whole country that is going through doctor crises and issues with physicians and issues with nurses. So we're looking to try and tackle this as a kind of unified response. Happy to answer any questions.
So my question on this, my daughter lives in Merritt and they're going through the same, you know, fiasco, maybe not every weekend, but almost every weekend. And like you say, it puts a huge strain on, on everybody. And I mean, if a person needs to go to the emergency ward, they don't need to go 300 miles away to get to the first one that's got a doctor in it. Every, in my mind, every emergency ward in this province should be staffed and online all the time, 24/7. That's what it's all about. You mentioned the fire department. When they get a fire call, they go to the fire call. They don't go, oh, sorry, we're going fishing this weekend or whatever. You're on call 24/7. So I guess the thing that disappoints me the most is the government reaction to this or these problems. Because every time I see these folks on TV announcing, we got it covered, we got it covered, well, obviously, folks, you don't have it covered. So whatever we can do to help the situation, how minimum it is, you know, writing a letter, doing whatever, we need to be as vocal as possible because to me, this is just totally unacceptable. Sals community, you know, is out 100 kilometers away from Lillawett. So now your facility is closed. Now they're saying to his folks, well, go to Kamloops. Oh, my God, that's just absurd. You know, I brought up the thought of instead of going to Kamloops, why don't you come to Pemberton, ship, send people this way? And then if necessary, they can be mandy backed out from the airport here right to BGH, St. Paul's, Lionsgate, whatever. There's, I think it would be a faster operation. This clinic here is, is always staffed and open. Yeah, no, it's just something to think about because it's, as everybody knows, time is of the essence in an emergency situation, right? So yeah, anyways, I've said enough. Vivian.
Thank you, and I really thank you, Joe, for coming today. It's, this is really important and it's, in one sense, brought a really strong alignment in between our different governments and all of the First Nations. And I'm really proud of you for pulling them in so quickly and getting that letter out. Have we, have we had any response from Ms. Shendrick on the, on the letter that was sent initially?
Thank you through the chair. We, we have had really good meetings with Interior Health regarding what and how we can do, some new recruitment ideas and some other ideas, but we're not responsible for the recruitment necessarily, nor are we responsible for the retention or the scheduling of doctors within our, within our area. We have had a couple of reach outs. We have also had, we have a meeting tomorrow with Interior Health and we have a number of phone calls with Interior Health throughout the week whenever there's going to be closures. I, I think the thing that's kind of shocking and most disappointing to us is when we went to UBCM and before we went to UBCM and before we, before the ripper dropped for the election, we reached out on a number of occasions to the minister and have yet to have a response. We've, we've been very, very clear on our requests and the response from the minister. I've had nothing, actually had radio silence and that was well before what we actually seen for the election stuff. So the reason that we're trying to do this just now is so that when new governments will come in play, we're poised and ready to kind of get back and get around the table with this. That's our main kind of idea. The other question, sorry, is as well as through the chair was when we were looking at areas to evacuate or move potential patients around, we are also aware of our kind of cumulative effect of what we have on our communities. Even the effect that we have on Kamloops Hospital is huge. So if we are starting to evacuate, bring people over to different communities here, our concern is that you end up having the same issues we have where your doctors are then stretched and then your doctors need time off and then they're not replaced. So we could inadvertently start causing closures here by evacuating potential customers and clients over the side of the mountain as well. Not that we don't take that on board and look at it favorably, but it really concerns us because we've even heard from doctors in Kelowna and Kamloops, they were affecting their schedules and what we're doing with it as well. So this, this is a major problem and that we're, we're trying to deal with it very delicately. And that's why I want to say this letter of support is definitely not to try and back the ministry or trying out anyone or trying to cause problems with Interior Health. We, we want to make sure that they understand that this is in support of them and what we can do to help them.
Any other questions from anybody?
And just to add to that, you know, we are, even though it's not our responsibility to, to do the recruitment and retention, we are reaching out to other communities in BC and we're, we're gathering all those people that are going through hospital closures and we are working with divisions BC that, that facilitates doctors to be locum doctors to come to rural areas. And we're putting together a new retention and recruitment program that will be a hospital representative, somebody that oversees the clinical and knows, knows what goes on in our hospital. A past doctor, retired physician that, that can deal with helping new recruits and what's expected of them. A First Nation representative that, that can also talk about their culture and their needs and what they need from a potential doctor. And then a member of Merritt Council, somebody that can showcase Lillawett, somebody that can say, hey, this is what we have, this is what we want, this is what, you know, we can offer and put that group together so that we can advocate for rural doctors, not urban doctors in rural positions, because that's what we've had and it's just not working. So, you know, I think that communities themselves can do a little bit as well as asking the province to oversee and, and help us, but you know, communities are definitely there. And Lillawett is being that, that community that is trying to reach out to the rest of BC and saying, hey, we've got an issue here, jump on board and people are receptive for sure.
Just want to clarify something that Director Hopple said. So you mentioned a distinction and a preference for rural doctors rather than urban doctors acting rurally. Are you referring to locums there or is there some other nuance in that that I was not?
Well, we are almost entirely staffed with what are called practice-ready assessment doctors. Those are foreign doctors who are being fast tracked into the Canadian system and they're required to work for a certain length of time in a Canadian rural site with supervision, with supervision. Our guys have no supervision and no support. And that's what I've been, I mentioned it to Adrian Dix, the minister, when I had a brief moment at the mic at UBCM and he gave me an answer that was pretty poorly informed, but, but did not acknowledge the concerns, like for example, choosing to work in the clinic and close the emergency department on certain days of the week and so on. And they're, who's managing the situation? It should be Interior Health and they've, they have not been managing the situation. So that's part of the answer there, if that, if that helps. And it's not that we're against the practice-ready assessment or foreign docs, it's that, that they require supervision and their support and they're absolutely not getting it and it's showing and, and we're not getting the service that we need as a community.
If I may, a lot of the doctors, well, all of our doctors right now, we cannot offer the culture that they need. So they want mosques, they want food, they want restaurants, they want education that, that just goes with their culture. Lillawett will never have that. And that's what I'm saying as opposed to having, so they come to Lillawett, they're in a rural position and then they, they just want to leave to go to the urban where they have their culture and they can, they can pick and choose. Like I said, we won't have that. So if we showcase Lillawett and we say, this is what we can offer, come to Lillawett. We've got the great outdoors, we've got the wars, we've got the path, we've got the trails, we've got, you know, fishing, hunting, we've got those kinds of things, but we don't have mosques. So that's what we're, we're trying to do here for retention and recruitment.
And it is also, sorry, coming up, it is also coming up at the Thompson Regional Health Board, but unfortunately that meeting isn't until December. And I believe that board was, was waiting until the new Minister of Health would be in place optimistically by December. And so to also campaign about the same issue for the, for the entire Thompson Regional Health Board with, with Lillawett probably being one of the spokespeople there at that meeting.
So, yeah, I just want to, you know, through this process, the ministry or Interior Health said that they would make sure that the ambulance departments know and, and the heli back and, and we had an incident when we had that 48 hour now, where a fellow at Gunley fell off a wall and banged his head. And the ambulance attendants called for the heli back and he was heli backed out to Kamloops. So that worked, but if people are at the stage where they, they think that they need to go to the emergency by themselves or, or by ambulance, it's, it's four hours from our area to Kamloops. It's a four-hour drive. And if you're not well, it's pretty tough. But that system worked that day for that event, it worked very well.
Through the chair, a couple of just kind of side issues that we experienced, just so that the board's aware of what we experienced on any other kind of given weekend now. We have an additional ambulance put on, which is fantastic, absolutely fantastic. Interior Health are working alongside to open up nighttime flights for helicopters, which is fantastic, absolutely fantastic. But the additional helicopter and the additional ambulance, it costs more than getting a doctor. But just so that we understand how kind of dire this is, I'm speaking to ambulance staff that are, staff are sleeping in their cars at night, ambulance staff. Young females sleep in a car at night in Lillawett because they can't sleep in the digs or they can't sleep in the facilities because alarms are going off all the time and they can't then go ahead and get a lot of additional areas to sleep in. Well, we've got young female ambulance staff and male coming to our town for a couple of days at a time sleeping in their vehicles. That's how dire this is. If we then have an incident in town, we have a small incident in town that involves the RCMP where somebody's injured and they're arrested, the RCMP detachment then need to separate out their detachment and then have an RCMP officer go to Kamloops and sit for four hours. And then they're not going to bring them back to Lillawett because they're not a taxi service. So we have First Nations people as well in our community that have been transported to Kamloops and then turned out at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, no money, no finances, no phones and no ability to phone back to their home community until eight and nine o'clock during the day and then have people then go and collect them. Now, this is all in the assumption that we're dealing with small one-off instances like, like directors that I was saying, we have these one-off instances, motorcycle accidents, we have these all the time. The issue then comes in of grave concern is what happens if we have something serious? What happens if we had a heat stroke incident where we have, I'm just going to get a low number in here of five or six people that are there? That's a significant issue for us. We have something like an equal outbreak at one of our lakes, that's a significant issue for us. If we have something larger scale than that, then we, we have a real serious issue at hand and that's what we're looking at.
Well, you could, you could very realistically have, you know, a multi-vehicle crash and have, you know, six, eight, 10 people in two vehicles. You could have a bus, you know, crashing. I mean, it's just, there has to be, it's like, in my mind, it's just, it's all about response side. And that's, like, even when you mentioned they flew from Goldbridge to Kamloops, okay, that's wonderful. Why didn't they fly from Goldbridge to PGH? Check the difference on the map, you know, time-wise, half the time probably, right? But I guess it's in a different hospital district, so, you know, they can't kind of figure out how to work together. It's just strange in my mind. But anyways, let's get a motion to provide a letter of support to the District of Lillawett and Interior Health. However it needs to be crafted, I think it needs to be crafted in a very forceful polite way. But just to get the point across that this is serious, serious stuff.
So in support of their efforts to work with Interior Health to staff Lillawett with doctors on a regular and reliable basis, please?
Yes.
Full-time, 24/7?
Well, and the point that you made about, you know, the mosques and all that stuff, so maybe they need to be really thinking about the location and, and the people they bring in, that they fit with the community, because otherwise it will never change, right?
Absolutely. And that's what Mayor Hopple and CAO McCullough are working on with Interior Health, I do believe.
We are.
Try and get physicians to fit more because we certainly did have excellent services for many of us.
Okay, so your motion is?
That it be recommended to the board, that the board provide a letter of support to the District of Lillawett, advocacy to Interior Health regarding ongoing hospital closures, including the points discussed by the board.
So we are the board.
So we don't have to recommend. You're the chair, this is committee of the board. So it will flow through to the board later on today so that we can.
So this will happen.
Resolve, this will happen today, not next month.
You were losing me. Now, this is the province. Straight out from the record. Yeah. Anyway, so moved and seconded, John? Moved and seconded, call a question? All in favor? Motion carries.
Chris, just wondering if we can flag this when we have our Silga and Lor Manlan LGA discussions?
Very much. If I can be of any assistance and any help in this, I'd be more than happy to attend any other meetings or provide more information. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming and you're welcome anytime.
He likes my office.
I do, I've come back in here to work and getting more work done here.
We should have exchanges.
So if I, if, when that comes, can I vote on that or would I be a conflict to vote on a letter like that? That's a word for Interior Health.
We think that, should we think that one out?
You, you can if you would like. That's your discretion as a director of the board to declare, we feel that there may be one, given that you're an employee of Interior Health.
Yeah, potential perception problem, right?
Yep.
We're still.
No harm in stepping out.
T A O verbal update.
Hi, everyone, no update today. I think you're all here.
Well, that didn't differ. Very nice. Information report, 5.2, Downton Lake Wildfire Recovery Operations. DJ is on screen. Welcome. Finally, a lot.
I thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much, Board, for your time today. We do have Jaya Bremer here with us today, who is the SLRD Recovery Unit Coordinator, to speak about the 2023 Downton Lake Wildfire Recovery Operations. Just to start, I just, just in all friends and comments of the energy of his presentations, but I do just want to state that this was one of the, one of the most impactful wildfire seasons that the SLRD has ever experienced. Our first alert went out on July 11th, then our final alert was stood down on September 26th. And then since that time, until recently, we've had Jaya with us with basically, it's been a whole team effort with Jaya really being kind of our rock for recovery efforts. But it's, it was one of the most impactful pieces. And really the thing, the piece of this report is this is to help frame us, it's about to learn from our past experience, but recovery operations are complicated. And I think this is about learning from our experiences, learning things that we did well, learning what things that we didn't do, learning things that we need to do again. And really, yeah, I'm quite happy that we're able to present this report to you. And I'll hand it over to Jaya. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So hi, everyone. My name's Jaya Bremer. I'm an emergency management consultant and I just, I really appreciate the opportunity to present on the 2023 Downton Lake Wildfire Recovery Operations at this table. And I just think it's a really important time to reflect on this event and make sure that we're learning from it. I know that all of our lives get, you know, so busy and filled up and especially once, you know, it started to be a significant amount of time from these impacts, we can forget to take that time and carve it out to make sure that we're learning from it. So I just really appreciate this opportunity. So let's go to the next slide. So the purpose, as, as Mark touched on, is really to do an overview of the recovery outcomes, what we've done in the past year and, and reflect on where there have been challenges and also, you know, the milestones that we've reached and where there have been lessons learned and improve on these recovery processes so that it informs those future events and how we approach recovery for those. I think, I just want to alert or bring your attention to one element of the report and that is that there are these yellow boxes sprinkled throughout it. And I don't want anyone to look at those and think that, you know, these are all the things we didn't do and should have done. That's not the intent of those areas. It's really, this is, those, those yellow boxes are a compilation of lessons learned and best practices of which we did the majority of. And it's that we want to make sure that we're capturing those in a succinct and clear way and not forget them for future events. And, and also some of those were things that we wish we had done sooner. And also there are opportunities for things that we can do outside of a recovery phase to improve, you know, our processes for future events. So as you're working through that report, please spend some time digging into those because that's really where the nitty gritty of what we've done and how we can do better lives. And I'm going to be focusing on a lot of that throughout this presentation, but I really want to make sure that this presentation is reflecting on the resilience of this community and what's been achieved and, and reflect on those best practices. So let's go to the next slide. So a bit of an agenda, I'm going to be cruising through a lot of this pretty quickly because it is a lot to get through and I'm trying to be very cognizant of your time today. So I, you know, if there's things that, that I don't go into as much detail as you're hoping, please ask in the Q and A period and Mark and I will be happy to, to dig in deeper and, and answer those. You know, really any of these pieces that I'm going to touch on could be its whole own presentation. So, so we're keeping it a bit high level. So we'll be starting with some of the overarching challenges and those are things that, that, you know, impacted various areas of this recovery and were challenges that we were running into over and over again. Some of the early recovery planning, so things we did last fall to set ourselves up in recovery. And then we'll dive into some of the recovery sectors. So we have people in community, recovery sector, economic recovery, environmental recovery. And then I just want to spend a little bit of time looking at all the various partners that we've worked with over the past year. And then we'll reflect on some lessons learned and best practices and then go into kind of next steps and ongoing support. I'll provide a closing statement and then we will open the floor to some Q and A. Next slide. So I'll just start with some overarching challenges. And, you know, these are things that really increased the complexity of this recovery and kind of contributed to its unique difficulties in a variety of ways. So just the first being a rural environment and this contributed to increased costs and challenges around resource mobilization and access to contractors and really, you know, added to those financial barriers that people experienced as well as just that expediency of, of people being able to start their recovery. The second being that many of these, the majority of them were secondary properties and that really challenged us to be able to find, you know, provincial ministries as well as NGOs who were able to provide support for secondary property owners. And, you know, we spent a lot of time advocating on behalf of looking for, for resources for, that would work for this entire community of, of impacted property owners. And, and again and again, we ran into difficulties around secondary versus primary properties. Another thing is just, you know, despite some of our, our early efforts in, in advocating on behalf of certain recovery issues, last fall, we, we ran into very long wait times for decisions to be. um, last fall, we, we ran into very long wait times for decisions to be made, and that really delayed um, individuals' ability to, to start their recovery, and we'll dig into a few examples of that in the coming slides. And, and lastly, this was the first recovery operation, uh, at this scale in SLRD history. So I think, you know, we've seen that there just, it kind of was a lack of, um, processes and, and policies, uh, that already existed within the SLRD, so a lot of decisions were being made, kind of, uh, you know, in the heat of things. And, um, I think there's an opportunity to, to put some of those policies and, and decision-making um, and communication plans in place ahead of another event. Um, so, next slide. So just, uh, briefly touching on some of the early recovery planning that, uh, we did. So in, in fall of twenty twenty-three, and in September, actually, um, I was brought on to complete a post-disaster needs assessment. So really digging in and trying to understand the variety of impacts that this event led to. Um, and from that, I developed a recovery plan that guided our actions to start addressing that, those variety of impacts. So I was brought on, uh, with funding from the province to fill the role of Recovery Unit Coordinator, and I worked really closely, um, in particular with Mark Phillips, but also, um, about a dozen SLRD staff members. Um, and so in la- last fall, we established a, uh, variety of recovery working groups, and those recovery, those working groups were really our avenue to, um, connect with individuals and local organizations, as well as a huge variety of provincial ministries to make sure that there was, um, focused, uh, advocacy work and, um, on specific recovery issues. So we had our Economic Recovery Working Group, we had our Provincial Coordination Table, um, we had a private land-based recovery working group and a crown land one. Um, we undertook water quality testing, um, as there was concerns from the residents around just the safety of their public drinking water in Gun Lake. And we developed a, a huge amount of recovery documents, so, uh, planning and building made a lot of, uh, supporting documents so that people could understand what that process would look like for rebuilding. Um, our Environmental Services Department made a lot of debris management, um, flow charts and supporting documents. And those, I, I think were essential for people starting to make sense of their recovery and getting going with it, but also will be foundational documents in, in any future event. So I think we've already set ourselves up much better in future events, um, with the creation of those. Uh, we also undertook a lot of community engagement and, and community communication. And this looked like phone calls to individual people and, and emails out to people. We, we set up the recovery while, uh, website, um, as a, a central place for people to receive information in a timely manner. Um, yeah, I, I think we can go to the next slide. So looking at people in community, um, this is considered one sector of recovery. A lot of the work we did was around advocacy, um, which I touched on, and so really, the SLRD operates as this middle point for communicating the needs that we're hearing on the ground from, um, local organizations and community members and businesses to then push that up to various provincial ministries and NGOs that can potentially match those needs. Um, so that was a huge part of the work that we did over the past year. Um, we also spent a lot of time working through challenges related to insurance and understanding, um, where there are shortcomings with, uh, secondary home insurance in particular, and connecting with the Insurance Bureau of Canada, who, who presented at our July Town Hall to really, um, understand those barriers that people were facing with that and, and trying to find more financial support. Um, the fact that this wasn't determined, uh, to be a disaster financial assistance eligible event from the province was, um, uh, very challenging for, for everyone, and that is the main avenue for funding to reach impacted individuals following events. Um, but because wildfire is deemed to be an insurable event, that was really a closed door for us. Um, so, yeah, despite a lot of time spent, um, pushing the province to develop programs and working with insurance providers, it, uh, was definitely an area that, um, we weren't able to, to support people or, or find viable solutions like we had hoped. Um, in terms of mental health supports, um, United Way provided funding to the Bridge River Valley Community Association to make counseling available to, um, impacted residents and people in the community that, you know, were still impacted by this event, even if their, their properties weren't directly impacted, you know, just prolonged evacuations, um, and the fear that that comes with and the ongoing stress, uh, can definitely absolutely take a toll, and so that was a great initiative, um, by United Way and the Bridge River Valley Community Association. Um, and then in July of this year, the Red Cross made, uh, one-on-one case management available, and, um, quite a few residents have been taking advantage of that, which is great. Um, in terms of planning and rebuilding, um, you know, I, I, this has been an area, I think, that residents have really been struggling with. Um, you know, the, the desire for more flexibility around, uh, rebuilding of, of properties and, and our planning and rebuilding team is, is really guided by very strict um, bylaws and legislation and, you know, B C building codes, and I think that, you know, they, they're unable to provide the flexibility that could have, um, you know, really supported a lot of individuals' needs, but they've absolutely made themselves extremely available to answer, uh, everyone's individual questions and set them up to understand how they can proceed, given the, um, you know, the, the laws that, that they're kind of bound by. Um, one thing that they were able to do was reduce the cost of applying for building permits by thirty percent, and we are starting to see, um, you know, primary of, some, some building permits come through, I think they're at about, um, you know, a half dozen now, so it's great to see that that is getting off the ground. Next slide. So in terms of economic recovery, um, in November of twenty twenty-three, we, uh, started our economic recovery table, and that was attended by um, B C Parks and the Ministry of Jobs and Economic Development and Innovation, um, Triple C T A, the Bridge River Valley Community Association, E M C R, um, Community Futures, as well as repri- representatives of some local businesses. Um, so that has been our focal point for hearing about the needs on the ground. Uh, one major thing to come out of this table is that the S L R D and Triple C T A applied for a marketing initiative funding stream from, uh, N D I T, which we were successful in, and this was for a, um, marketing initiative to support tourism operators in the Bridge River Valley. Uh, that was for twenty thousand dollars, and Triple C T A provided an additional ten thousand dollars to, uh, boost that amount, and that uh, marketing initiative is underway currently. Uh, some lessons learned out of economic recovery is just the importance of, uh, partnerships with local business associations because they will understand the community best and are often very trusted by communities, um, and just a need for a comprehensive economic impact assessment so that, um, at our level with the S R D as well as the provincial level, we can really get a clear sense of what would support businesses in rebounding from, you know, prolonged evacuations. Um, you know, fortunately, none of them actually had direct impact to their businesses, but a lot of secondary impacts and financial tolls that they are still recovering from, but I think an economic impact assessment, um, that information is, uh, really critical for developing programs that can support them. Next slide. Environmental recovery certainly ended up being, um, probably the biggest time commitment from us in the past year. There was, uh, tons of different initiatives that relate to environmental recovery. Um, our Environmental Services Department has been extremely busy for the past year. Uh, they, some of the initiatives they've been able to get off the ground are extending hours at transfer stations, and they waive tipping fees and load limits for metal. Um, we've provided a hazardous materials survey reimbursement program, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, and hazardous materials testing. Um, and we've done a lot of follow-up on reports of illegal dumping and, and made sure that the province is taking that seriously. Uh, over the past year, we have, um, carried out three rounds of water quality testing at Gun Lake to just follow up, um, on concerns about clean drinking water and continue to monitor it, so, uh, that third round just took place, um, a few weeks ago. Uh, some lessons learned in terms of environmental recovery is just communicating early with public regarding protocols for waste removal. Um, that has definitely been, um, an ongoing challenge, and people are at such different places with their debris cleanup and waste removal, so, uh, any opportunities to get ahead of that is, um, going to support people. Next slide. So again, part of, uh, environmental recovery has been the work we've done around the riparian area. I think this was probably the most challenging work that we undertook, and also the area that we've seen some of the biggest breakthroughs. Um, so starting in October of last year, we began, um, advocating on behalf of residents to, uh, who were very concerned that they would not be able to clean up their properties, uh, because uh, of being within that riparian area, which is thirty, a thirty-meter setback from the lake, and very concerned about not being able to rebuild where their original homes were. So we began advocating to, um, you know, the Ministry of Emergency Management and Climate Readiness, E M C R, as well as Walrus, Ministry of Water, Lands and Resource Stewardship. Um, and despite a lot of, um, you know, they would attend all of our meetings and they would tell us, you know, we're working on something, we are going to try and address this, we hear you, um. Nothing came for a long time. So in January of twenty twenty-four, the S R D wrote to Minister of Colin, the Minister of Walrus, and this was followed by an in-person meeting attended by C E O, uh, Heather Paul, and I believe Mark Phillips as well. Um, and although that was a success and a great opportunity to continue, uh, pushing for some flexibility in terms of the riparian area, uh, legislation, um, it wasn't until March, so we started to see a bit of movement on these issues. So March twenty twenty-four, uh, Walrus released the Supplemental Guidance for Riparian Area Cleanup um, Activities Within Wildfire-Affected Riparian Areas, and this meant that residents would not be required to engage a qualified environmental professional or apply for a rip- riparian development permit to conduct cleanup on their properties. So for many people, this was the first time they were able to start cleaning up their properties. In July, we, um, received the announcement that there would be a reimbursement program for, uh, those residents that had hired a Q E P to under, to undertake the riparian area assessment. Um, so those that had hired someone ahead of that March announcement would be reimbursed for that, um, cost. And then finally, the thing that we had been pushing for, for, you know, ten months at this point, um, finally came out in July of twenty twenty-four, and that was the twenty twenty-three wildfire rebuilding directive, which means that Walrus is working with homeowners to rebuild on their original footprints. Um, so this is a huge breakthrough. Uh, a lot of people, the way that their properties are built, uh, around Gun Lake means that they can't actually build outside of the riparian area, so they potentially would be unable to rebuild at all without this, uh, directive being released from Walrus. So, um, for now, Walrus has said that this is strictly linked to the twenty twenty-three wildfire, but, um, they are definitely using it as a, um, it, it, you know, uh, just as a, as a, see how it goes, and hopefully it can be applied to future events if this um, is a positive program, and so this work is underway currently with Walrus and homeowners. Um, so we will see what comes of that. Next slide. Um, the final part of environmental recovery are our land-based recovery tables, and we had a private land-based recovery table and a crown land recovery table. So, uh, the private land recovery table really was, uh, there was about a dozen residents who attended these meetings every other week, and um, they brought so much, uh, so much knowledge to the table and, and specialized skills and a lot of dedication and um, time to developing solutions to their issues. So, um, one of those being, we were successful in finding, um, an NGO called Caribou Carbon Solutions to, um, fund a three-year replanting on private property, so that is completely covered. And, uh, they will, they just have been doing their site assessments in the last kind of month, and they'll be starting to do the first rounds of planting in twenty twenty-five. Um, we have been working with them around advocacy for their salvage logging concerns, um, and they were successful in having a meeting with, um, logging companies in the area, and they continue to, uh, push for answers to some of their questions. Uh, this group also was successful in receiving donation of trees from Ministry of Forests, so those went into the ground in the spring and have helped kind of, um, uh, lower some of the soil movement and, uh, on these properties next to the lake, and, um, they've also received some funding from a local heritage fund for grass seeding. Um, they also worked with, uh, private donation to have the removal of debris on, uh, nine properties who were uninsured or underinsured, so a lot of successes in that group. Our crown land initiatives include a recovery table that has been focused on the reforestation of crown land. Um, they're on a similar timeline to the work being done by Caribou Carbon Solutions, so they've been doing site assessments and they'll start planting in twenty twenty-five. And I think just something that I've really seen that's new with this event is, is an increased focus on, um, ecological rehabilitation and, and doing a much more thoughtful replanting, rather than just kind of monocrops going in, and there, there's certainly spending a lot more time to work with the unique geography of these areas, um, and that's really, really great to see. So some ongoing issues are just, uh, that continued advocacy for sustainable logging practices and continued push for further environmental restoration, um, and thoughtful replanting. Next slide. So this is just an overview of some key partners we've worked with in recovery, and I'm not going to read it out, but I, I hope that this, um, shows you the variety of, of organizations and ministries we've worked with in the past year, and how big of an endeavor this has been. Um, it's required so much time and expertise from, from so many different, uh, people and organizations, and that has been insurmountable, and I think that this event has, has built a lot of meaningful relationships and partnerships that I believe will, will carry forward with the S L R D in the future. So just a massive amount of time and, um, support from all of these different organizations for which, uh, I'm, I'm extremely thankful. Next slide. So some lessons learned and best practices, um, I think the, the top one just being the need for greater team resourcing, um. In any recovery, really what we can achieve is going to be dictated by uh, how much capacity we have and then the ability to access funding. So this, uh, team resourcing is huge, it, um, everyone's day jobs are already full, and then you throw a recovery event on there, and people are really, uh, under a lot of stress and pressure to still meet the demands of their base positions. So, um, fortunately, I was able to add some capacity to the recovery team, but in the future, I think, uh, making a stronger case for, to E M C R to fund more of a team approach would be extremely valuable in just getting ahead of more of these recovery Would be extremely valuable in just getting ahead of more of these recovery issues. Understanding and planning for rural challenges. Um. You know, I think what we've learned is that it, there is no one size fits all. You know, what would support Pemberton or Whistler in a recovery is so different from what our rural communities need and just their. Their barriers around accessing their properties and um being able to handle debris management. Um, you know, procuring resources. So. Finding any opportunities where we could create some targeted incentives or partnerships with local contractors. To ensure that those essential services. Uh, can be delivered even on a smaller scale would would go a long way for. Um, supporting rural challenges. The need for some advanced planning with leadership, staff and board. Um. I I would love to see um, you know, this table spending time outside of, you know, an active. Uh, response or an ongoing recovery to really um. Put some some concerted effort into developing guidelines and policies and and goals and objectives for what. Is in scope and what is outside of scope in terms of uh the approach to recovery. And I think that will take a lot of pressure off of. Uh, each of you in a recovery to then have to have those discussions um in the heat of things. So. A a. A huge opportunity there, I think. Um, in terms of communication, just that need for consistent, early and accessible communication, which is so vital. I think there was definitely um. Some time in this recovery when we were on the reactive and we were playing catch up and that is a really hard place to be in. Um, I think it took a while for us to win back kind of the. More collaborative uh relationship with residents and and. I think if we had had more um. Dedicated support around the comms uh earlier on and throughout this recovery that could have really aided and taken some stress off of um. The recovery team. And then timely regulatory support. So engaging with regulatory bodies early on to expedite necessary approvals to facilitate recovery. We've seen just how long it can take for some of these pieces to move through, especially with that uh riparian area. Uh, work that took ten months, but any anywhere where we can be getting these conversations. Out um earlier is going to support more timely recovery. And next slide. So next steps, um, my role as recovery unit coordinator has wrapped up. Um, but Mark Phillips is the continuity for all things recovery. Um, for which he's been very involved in in all of this work for the past year. So um, he continues to uh keep the recovery S L R D um. Email account active and monitored. And the S L D recovery website will stay up to date and be available to people. And any important recovery updates will continue to be sent out to um our email newsletter subscribers. Next slide. So just in closing, uh, you know, recognizing that for. Uh, majority of these residents, they are very much still in their recovery process. Um, so things are adapting for. S L R D staff with with me stepping out of this role, but uh really recognizing this isn't. Over and that many S R D staff members continue to be engaged with residents on um a daily basis. But this is a moment to reflect on the many milestones we've had over the past year and. Um, that there's a lot to be proud of and and many areas that we weren't able to. Um. You know, push forward in and and find a solution in the way we had hoped, but this is. An opportunity to try and think through some of those issues outside of recovery to see if we can be set up better for them. Ahead of future events. Um, so I hope that this report is illuminating and. Um, you know, helps with with just an an overall understanding of recovery and also of this event. And that time is spent digging into that. Um. I, yeah, it's been a pleasure to work with. The S L R D over the past year and um, you know, I hope that I can support this work with you in the future, but. I really uh welcome any questions on 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 anything we've touched on or on anything that you've seen in the report. Um. And so we, yeah, we, let's open the floor to just a Q and A. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, excellent report and excellent work done. Uh. I had the opportunity, Sal took me on a drive over there and. We toured the whole area, so it was uh. Yeah, very enlightening to see it firsthand. Uh, so. Anyways, you guys have done an amazing job. So, Penny, John.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Uh, one of the things that caught my eye was the NGO involvement. And um I'm sitting here as a um representative of the District of Squamish and thinking ahead to if, when. My community deals with something similar to what we saw at Gun Lake. And um, so my question is, um, how were the services initiated with those NGOs? With like existing relationships, S L R D cold calls? Or the NGOs coming to the S L R D saying, hey, we think we can help? A mixture of all of those?
Yeah, that's a great question and and something we've. Connected with E M C R last week about in particular. Um, it's kind of a mix of all of those. I I think there have been some NGOs that I've seen. Um, you know, step into this space in previous events that I reached out to. Um, some of them were from us asking the E M C R if they knew of anyone who was operating in this space. That uh would be a good fit. And uh, to be honest, I actually saw a lot fewer NGOs step up. Following this wildfire season than I've seen for other events. And I'm not really sure exactly why that is. I don't know whether NGOs are just under. A lot of different stress responding to the nu- huge number of events we've had in B C in the last few years. And whether they financially were already kind of tapped out um and and busy. I also think that um. The Red Cross filled a smaller role than they have in other events. Um, which I'm I'm not exactly sure why. So. I think there's just. A lot of need for NGOs right now. And um I think. Part of the issue also was that with these being a lot of secondary homes, that's outside of the mandate of many of these NGOs. And so they also um. Yeah, in some cases chose to to not. Step up based on just being asked by a lot of different areas for their services. So um, looking to E M C R to try and. Connect more with like a a larger variety of NGOs than than we kind of had access to. Uh, to try and. Step into more of that advocacy role and in the hopes that more NGOs can work to fill the unmet needs on the ground.
Uh, first off, Armand, Sal and then Vivian. And then Mike.
Thank you. I I have two questions that I I think are related but um to each other, but um. I appreciated the the acknowledgement that some. Policy work, I guess, in advance of of recovery efforts would be beneficial and and um. And I just wonder. You know, there's also mentioned sort of at the same time that, you know, one approach doesn't work for. Every area. And I just wondered how, you know, if there are pieces of that that can. Be brought out to specifically that we can do that work to like take on that recommendation that I think is a key. One for for this table. Um. And how that. And how. There's also mention of quicker decision-making and. In lack in. In areas that maybe lack specific policy, how do we? Like, I I think these things are all connected. I just, I just wonder sort of next, next steps on. Uh, from here on on that. And I don't know if that's a question for uh our C E O or or for um for Jia, but uh. I'll just throw it out there and see what happens.
Yeah, maybe I'll start, but I'll, but I I would love to hear um, you know, C E O Paul or or Mark, your thoughts on this. But I see it, uh, what could be beneficial is maybe determining kind of a. A decision-making tree of what we determine is out of scope and what is in scope and whether that is, you know, things like. Um. You know, do we support only primary residents or do we support, you know, any residents impacted by? By events? And then from there being like. Do we make a pot of money available that can be adapted to different programming? Um, do we? Uh, you know, offer each department head X amount of funding to address a recovery need as as they see fit, based on their priorities. Um, things like that.
Yeah, um. Through the chair, uh, thank you for the question. Uh, I think this is, are are, we, we're kind of going to go through this report and start to kind of uh. Understand uh ways to pass forwards and our 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 plan is to bring the report uh back to the board in the future about uh. How we can actually address a number of the issues in here. Uh, but I do think, I think there's. Uh, just to the comment, uh, continue on the same level that Jai was making. The, I think really the processes that we use need to be kind of built upon. I mean, for recover, or I mean, for response phase, it's really clear. We have legislation, we have guidelines, we have plan. Uh, we know what we can apply for funding for, we, we know we can't apply for funding. Recovery is uh very much more in the developed. Uh, and it is a much, it's a different process that we follow that every, almost every piece that we're going for, going through is a business case. There's a, you know, and there's a whole project plan about how we pull the partners in, how we make our argument. And so it's a much different uh, and also, uh, as you can see through this event, is it's a lengthy process uh to move uh these things forwards. Uh, so I do think uh, I do think there's some really important conversations that we can have internally with the board and with our C E O about how we. Uh, how we establish those goals of this respond, how we establish those objectives. And like as Jai was saying, like, what are the things that we, what is in scope and what is non-scope? Do we support private property? Do we support insurable events? Like, there's just a whole bunch of uh policy discussions that would really help uh our recovery team. Uh, in being able to move forwards uh quickly. Obviously.
So. Yeah, uh, thank you for the report, uh, Jai. It's very well done. And I like the the highlighted uh. Um, lessons learned and there's and there were lots for sure. And. On the communication side, you know, it seemed like it took a while. Uh, to get up to speed, but in the end it was excellent. And. We saw it in the, in the Poole Creek. Uh, disaster there. And it was, it worked out very well. Like, I also follow the uh, the T N R D and what they're doing with the Shetland Creek Fire. So they've got their lessons learned and they're moving forward also with excellent communications, community meetings, virtual. Uh, and in person and. And so on and so forth. So I think. On that end of it, I think we've gotten really, really well. And the recovery page is excellent with the F A Qs. Um, it, it's all just excellent, excellent stuff. I think. One of the biggest issues, like it's noted, was debris removal and all the issues around the debris removal. Uh, that started before. Uh, you know, the new regulations came into place and. And so on and so forth. We were very fortunate. That the. Uh, through the Ministry of Forests, that a logging company would go in and actually do some. Uh, salvage logging on some of these properties, because there was. A lot of big trees. That were on some of the bigger lines. And uh, everything that happened there. And that's one of the. I think. Something uh lessons learned is. And we've seen it now near the end, because that logging company isn't there right now. And we've had issues with uh. Some material going to private properties to get processed and so on and so forth. Is looking, working with the Ministry of Forests to have a site where some of this material can get taken to. And eventually either processed or burned. Uh, we've still got issues with some of the property owners that haven't touched their properties yet. Unfortunately. So I think looking at something like that on the debris removal would be really appreciated. When that goes through, that also goes to the concrete. They have all the rest of it. Vivian.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um. I know, Jia, when I first saw you on the screen on one of the recovery calls, I think I went to Mark. Who is this young pit squeak with pink tails? Talking about disaster, instrument in the S L R D, but I subsequently saw you doing a very good job. And I, I really appreciate this report. It, it was tough because these were new situations and so there was a lot of learning going on. And so the. The layout in the yellow boxes is just beautiful for for future. For future staff. I mean, there's no question, we'll, we'll have more disasters, but. We'll be a lot farther ahead, given um some of the learnings that are so well laid out here. So thank you very much.
Mike.
Yeah, my question was mostly answered through Director Hertford's uh questions. Um. But uh, yeah, just to echo that, I, first of all, that that was an amazing report. There's some, I'm fighting the temptation to want to dig into a bunch of that stuff. Um, and I'm looking forward to seeing how some of it could be put into policy. So whether it's things from, you know, the mental health piece, establishing some of the relationships, the steps. Um, you know, building permits, waste management. Um. Yeah, I I look forward to seeing how that could be built into policy so that staff is that much more nimble in the in the next event. And I just put the comment out that. Um. I guess I'm hopeful that there will be discussion about supporting this work through budget. Uh, this year so that we can move ahead with with with. Building these recovery plans. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chris. Well, just more, a couple of comments. Um, if I may, I really appreciate the report uh on the very practical. Uh, the only one thing that I wasn't sure about is the idea of of moving our communications out onto other people's groups and platforms and stuff. I. I tend to. Uh, I suspect it uh that. It, you know, focusing on being very active on our own page and so on and making everything very shareable and then. First thing, meeting events is more the way to go, I think. Uh, leave that to staff. That's the one piece where I was like, oh, uh. No, not sure if we want to start posting on everyone else's page. That's just fraught with peril on social media. Um, sort of, I I really appreciate the comments about um more policy on recovery. I I have a feeling that there's some even broader discussions to have. In that that sort of vein, I I saw a talk recently. And it was basically about how we, you know, often look down our noses at the people who. Don't believe in climate change and don't believe in climate science. Um, but the the point of this talk is like, well, those folks are actually, you know, we. Despite not believing what the clear science says, they actually live according to their beliefs. Uh, whereas a lot of the rest of us who are total believers in the science and understand it. We're not acting or behaving accordingly, planning accordingly. And and so I think there's a lot of a thinking about, you know, where, we're in a completely different circumstance. And so when these things happen, where can we rebuild? What are our societal expectations? I mean, I saw in this event. Um. A whole lot of things, but you know, people who felt. It was, uh, there's a decent chance it'd be okay not being insured or the assumption that, you know, first world country. If things went really bad, there would be some mechanism there to support them. And those mechanisms actually aren't there. And people don't understand that. And and so there's big topics like this that. It's not just for us as a board. I think we have to be having these conversations with our community and. It's so big and intimidating. No one's wanting to have those discussions. And I've started to, you know, try and talk about manager cheating a few places. And it's really hard. People don't know how to have that conversation. I don't know how to have it. Um, and I think this is an area too beyond just our recovery policy and the limitations there. I think somehow, and maybe this is something to take up our next strategic planning. Um, some of these broader discussions we have to have with ourselves and with our community, I think. That was a whole, I mean, it's a huge topic, I think, but.
Anybody else? Do I, any final comments?
I just like, yeah, just a comment. Uh, just a few things, just. I really like to just acknowledge the community, uh, and it's been a very challenging event, tragic loss across that community. Uh, but I do want to acknowledge the resilience. And I think we were seeing rebuilding, we're seeing the area greening up. And uh, we are extremely grateful for those who provided input, helped us guide us to the issues that we need to look at. So. Uh, I do want to express my appreciation to that community and we also appreciate that recovery is not over for them and the S L R D will. Uh, this recovery event, I I got, uh, with many partners involved and many people who are committed to trying to find. many partners involved, and many people who are committed to trying to find channels and ways that we could support this community. And also them listening to those issues. The riparian changes, that it was a lot of staff members within the Ministry of Environment who really were pushing forwards and were wanting this. And I think it does show, I think our team, it's a small team and a team that went for many months, but I think we changed policies that have been in the way, I think, for a lot of rebuilding for previous events. So I just wanted to commend those, our partners who have actually helped support, make those changes and also our team. And also the staff. I think this this event, I mean, starting July 11th, we went into our EOC activation, seven-day-a-week operations, almost all the way to mid-September, and then fully transitioned with almost the same team into this recovery operations that continued till today. So we have a small, but we do have a very powerful team that are trying to do good work and really want to connect with those communities. And just finally, if you want to acknowledge Jaya, who's kind of been the rock for our recovery through this whole event, and came with us a year pretty much. But her expertise and just the approach she brings to it, the partners, the way that she is able to reach out to the community and to make those relationships is just very appreciative. And this report is a great foundation for us to make sure that we don't lose the complexities of the last year, and we also have a way to start considering how we look for us. And also just to appreciate the board through this event, just for your support and humble guidance. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the board, I would like to really thank you and your, you know, your group of folks for putting in so many hours on this event and other events. You guys are relentless and that's 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 wonderful. I mean, there's a lot of difference between being dedicated and being committed. You guys are committed, so that's that's a wonderful thing. It puts us in a good place. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Jaya. So Chair.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Motion to receive. Pass motion to receive. Done good. Move second call question, call favor, pose, move and carry. Six point one, Chair's verbal report. I think I've said more than enough, so thank you very much. Let's move on to decision on late business. We have none. Late business. And then you can't really adjourn because Mr. Rainbow is not here, but
Until Tony comes back.
So move. Second item be adjourned. All the question on paper. Jack's opposed, but we're gonna adjourn anyways.
Yeah, so